I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, bless all our actions and carry them on by thy gracious assistance so that every prayer and good work of ours may begin from thee and by thee be happily ended through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Roll call, yes.
Rob Neider.
Present.
Rob Bensass.
Here.
I like it.
Tim Clunk.
Here.
Kim Wagner.
Here.
Keith Luder.
Here.
Tom Snyder.
Here.
Steve Pascoe.
Here.
Next, approval of the meeting minutes. I'll need a motion to approve the minutes.
Make the motion to approve the meeting minutes?
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll send you a post. So announcements and communication. I see the mayor's not here, but.
Okay, thank you. I'll address the council with a letter first and then with a report. One of the most critical elements of an effective law enforcement is cooperation and keeping the trust of the public. This is an essential part of public safety in a community and is not to be taken for granted. When I became chief, I spoke of the importance of community-oriented policing. I examined with a clear eye just what our department does and how it functions with regards to community policing. I asked myself some questions about our relationships with McSherrystown. Do our residents and business owners genuinely have faith in our police department? What kind of impact do we make in the community? Are we participating in local activities, attending community meetings, or neighborhood events? Do we support other sports programs? And when was the last time one of them visited a school or business just to say hello? I am here to report that our department regularly gets involved in all of these activities. In the last six months, the McSherrystown Borough Police Department has conducted over three hundred and fifty building, school, and house checks, over three hundred and thirty business checks, over two hundred and thirty field contacts with members of the community, and participated in seventeen public service activities. As part of these public service activities, the McSherrystown Police participated in the semi-annual DEA drug takeback at the McSherrystown Moose in April. The event was in support of a joint DEA program and the Adams County Collaborating for Youth Organization. During this event alone, McSherrystown Police Officers interacted with fifty-one citizens who dropped off over ninety-three pounds of assorted medicines and drugs to be disposed of by the DEA. The McSherrystown Police Department has worked in partnership with the local business to introduce the Coffee with a Cop Program. Coffee with a Cop events is a way to connect with our residents and get to know each other over a cup of coffee. I frequently am told of positive connections and interactions that the people of McSherrystown have had with members of our department. We have supported our local schools by stopping in during the school day, walking the halls, and meeting the students, faculty, and staff. We also supported Delone Catholic High School's 2024 graduation ceremony held this year inside of the Lawrence B. Shepherd Junior Memorial Gymnasium. We are not done with our community engagement programs for this year. We are scheduled to participate in a community fair later this month, the Home Delone Catholic High School football games this fall, more Coffee with a Cop events, and another DEA drug takeback at the McSherrystown Moose in October. Police work is not just about enforcing laws. Non-enforcement activities cost little in terms of money, time, or effort, but they pay huge dividends in public safety. The fact that our officers go out of their way to participate in something that is important to our community demonstrates how much we really care about the borough. So I'll continue with our monthly activity report for May 2024. For alarms, we had none. Animal complaints, we had three. We had one assault, one burglary, six civil incidents, no criminal mischief, no criminal trespasses, no disorderly conducts, two disturbances, zero domestics, zero drug violations, zero firearms violations, two forgeries, two harassments, one kidnapping, one ordinance violation, three parking complaints, one public drunkenness, one protection from abuse, one sex offense, four suspicious activities, three traffic accidents, one traffic complaint, one assist, excuse me, seven assist medical, three assist police, one assistant request, thirty-two building checks, yeah, thirty-two building checks, seventy-six business checks, one family and children incident, two mutual aids, two public service, three welfare checks. Other duties, we had one cellphone extraction, one emergency maintenance, one fire, two nine-one-one hang-ups, two follow-up to other calls, one for just information, one lost and found, one mental health crisis, one miscellaneous info request, one police notification, three validations, and one warrant. So incident offenses we had for May were seven. Our incidents cleared were two juvenile allegations. We had zero for adult arrests and zero for other agency referrals. We have four traffic citations. Our traffic accident locations were Main and North Second Street, the three hundred block of Main Street, and Main and First Street. Our field contact reports, we had forty-eight. For training in May 2024, a borough police officer attended a forty-hour block of instruction offered by the Pennsylvania State Police for death investigations.
Who was that?
That was Corporal Carey.
Okay.
Time and attendance, our patrol hours were four hundred and fifty-nine hours and twenty-eight minutes, seventeen hours and sixteen minutes for overtime hours, twenty vacation hours, and forty hours of training. Our donations for May, one tactical entry tool, which is a RAM valued at three hundred dollars received by the department in the month of May 2024. Our vehicle expenses, car one, we had three hundred and sixty-six point two miles, fuel was seventy-nine point two gallons. We had maintenance costs for car one was four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. That was for an oil change and for a boot on the CV joint on the right side. Car two had two hundred and twenty-two miles, fuel used was fifty-six gallons, fifty-six point eight gallons. Car three, we had three hundred and three point four miles, fuel was forty-seven point four gallons. Total miles was eight hundred and ninety-one point six miles, total fuel use was a hundred and eighty-three point four U.S. gallons.
So you are rotating them and using them.
Yes. And also, I have graphs if you would like to see these later.
Thanks for your report. Yeah, that's very thorough. Any questions, Chief?
Chief, are you going to discuss the fireworks?
Yes. It was brought to my attention prior to the meeting about fireworks in the borough on July fourth.
Yeah.
So that falls into Act Seventy, Act Seventy-four, 2022. So I'm going to read subsection eleven oh four, Use of Consumer Fireworks. Conditions, Use of Consumer Fireworks. A, a person who is at least eighteen years of age may purchase, possess, and use consumer fireworks. Prohibitions, a person may not intentionally use consumer fireworks, one, on private property or on public property, including but not limited to streets, parking lots, sidewalks, and parks, without the express permission of the owner or entity that controls that property. B one, okay. B two, within directed at or directed from a vehicle or building. B three, directed at another person. B four, while the person is under the influence of alcohol, a controlled substance, or another drug. B five, within a hundred and fifty feet of a building or vehicle, whether or not the building or vehicle is owned by the user of the consumer fireworks. Eleven oh four C, conditional use, no person may use consumer fireworks within a hundred and fifty feet of an animal housing facility or a fenced area designed to confine livestock owned or managed by another person. If a person uses consumer fireworks at a distance of a hundred and fifty to three hundred feet from an animal housing facility or fenced area designed to confine livestock owned or managed by another person, the user of the consumer fireworks shall notify in writing the owner or manager of the livestock at least seventy-two hours in advance of the use that consumer fireworks will be used in the area. Essentially, a hundred and fifty feet from any dwelling, which there's no room in McSherrystown for that because we're so close.
So you guys, yeah, when this happens, you get there, then they're all done, and they go away, and over the last few years, you see a lot of that.
And my first year here, I was out on July fourth, and there were a lot of people where I was going, no, no. So.
That's a tough one. They sell all this stuff, you know, and people like them. All right, hey, thanks for the report. Public comments, is there any?
No public comment. Public Works asked me just to remind everyone to clean up after their dog at the dog park, and then I just want to let residents know we've ended brushing and limb.
Thanks for that.
And also, I have, the fire department came, called me and asked me a question about the borough of McSherrystown owns the siren down at the disposal plant. As of right now, that siren is being sounded for fire calls during daytime hours, but not in the evening. We have the option as a borough to just have that siren go off for natural disasters, or we continue to have it going off for fire calls or natural disasters. Since we own and have to maintain that siren, it would probably, in my opinion, be in our better interest just to do it for natural disasters and for the monthly testing. I mean, the fire department does not need that siren to go off for any reason, they all have pagers. It's just something that came up new with the county, and they just wanted to know what our wishes were, if we wanted to go for just natural disasters or continue to have it go off for all daytime fire calls.
I'm in agreement with you.
What maintenance costs are we incurring with that?
That's a good question.
Well, it doesn't, I'm not sure what.
What's the month you said?
It is owned by the borough, the fire company has nothing to do with it, so it falls on us either way. So, you know, we need to keep it because of natural disasters.
Yeah, I don't think there's any maintenance costs, it's just a motor that spins.
Yeah, three days.
But we would be responsible for any maintenance that would be needed on it, and it would not go off for the.
So he sets it off then.
County.
The county does that, so we could just instruct them.
So they're the ones, they're the ones that activate.
I'm all for that. Are you for that? Is everybody all right with that, just for natural disasters?
Yeah, as long as, you know, if the fire department, if the guy is there at the fire department saying that it's not necessary for them, absolutely. Just leave it for natural disasters and.
Testing. Yep.
Well, the testing is pretty important to make sure it's going to work, but.
Jess, do you want to call Rick Reiser and let him hear that, or you want me to contact him?
I can contact him.
Okay.
Okay, any other?
That siren actually sounded about three times so far this week.
Primary, it's.
I heard it when I was at the day of that accident. Yeah.
If they don't, I think it's primarily there for volunteers, to alert volunteers.
That's what it was for.
Now, they all have individual pagers furnished by the fire department, so.
Yep, so, yeah.
There's no, you know, no need for that to go off.
Yeah, for people that sleep in, then.
Especially the neighbors that are next door, probably annoyed by it.
And while we're discussing the fire department, being a former firefighter, I see when I go up and down our alleys, we have a lot of residences that are accessed from our alleyways. And a lot of our alleyways are unpassable for fire apparatus and ambulances. Just a reminder to the public, we need to keep the alleyways trimmed back, that the fire apparatus and ambulances have access, because we do have so many residences that are accessible from the alleyways. So, you know, it's something that they need to do as a homeowner, you need to keep your trees and stuff trimmed back off the alley so they can.
Is that like eight foot high or something?
Fifteen feet.
Oh, fifteen feet height, so, yeah, well, that's just something we'll have to try to look at.
I think it's fifteen, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
Well, you have the ladder truck, you have the ladder truck, you have, your ambulances and everything are high, you know, you need to be able to get, there's a lot of trees hanging over the alleys, and people have hedges that are two feet out into the alleys that need to be trimmed back. It's, to me, it's crucial that we get the alleyways accesses opened up for the fire department.
Yep.
While the chief is here, I guess this is near the subject, speaking of alleys, you have some young kid just got his license visiting here from Boston. These alleys out here in Pennsylvania, I'm from New York, they don't have stop signs. So if he's flying by these back alleys, goes through a stop sign, well, goes through the alley, across the other intersection, and somebody else hits him, what's up there? The kid's going to say, there were no stop signs.
Yeah, we talked about that years ago. Yeah, that's come up several times, and why they don't have stop signs there, everybody knows that you have to yield the right of way to the incoming.
But there's not even a yield sign.
No, but it's kind of understood.
It's common, I hate to say it's common sense.
Yeah, out here to us, it is, like I said, some, in Boston, they don't do that, it's a stop sign.
Yeah, and as stated, you have to give right of way.
Yep.
Okay, so anybody coming in on a main street like that, and you're coming off of an alley, you're supposed to stop and look.
And these boys, you know, they used to have, what, instruction at schools for bicycles and things like that, that's where they need to learn that, you know, for parents or people at school need to do that. But, yeah, you have to yield the right of way, I mean, it's just.
And somehow, I don't think that's just some kid from Boston.
Not that, just giving you an example.
I'm thinking that's kids who live, right here, and know very well.
Right, but, I mean, how many times you see kids on bikes go through a four-way stop sign, you know, if there's no cars coming, they just keep going, you know, so it's, it is what that is.
Any other comments?
Okay, if I slide by, they're from Boston.
There you go.
Boston rules.
Yeah, there you go, all right. Okay, I guess we'll get into this new business here. So we need approval for the, of the conditional use of application for last month for the property of three sixty-three Moore Street, remember, we need an approval for that to conditional use. So I need a motion to approve the conditional.
I'll make a motion, I approve it.
For May eighth, okay, I need, and a second then?
Second.
Okay, thanks. All in favor for that?
Yes.
The motion carries, and, yep. Okay. So next on the agenda is the office hours, and Jess has been, we've been doing this since February, and there's been very few residents that have come in in, you know, the later days on Wednesday, so we're asking that we have the hours Monday through Thursday from eight to three P.M. and Friday from eight to twelve. I need a motion. I mean, is that, or we can discuss it, I mean.
So the Wednesday was.
Yeah, Wednesday, it would be eight to three.
Because there was, Jess has been keeping track of that, and there has only been a few people utilizing that later date, time.
Yep, it's.
About four people since the end of February.
Yeah, so, you know.
Doesn't justify the cost.
That's right, right, right. And, you know, I remember Lou An, you know, it was a case where she was already here preparing and, you know, for the meeting, and that's one of the reasons they had it that way. So I had, I mean, I think it's appropriate to do it, so if somebody wants to.
You can call the judgment call, let's just say it flips around, it just gets real busy, you can always come back and say, hey, we're busy now, everybody's coming in.
Is that just people physically coming in, or is that phone calls too?
We get some phone calls, but still not a lot, because I think people assume business hours are business hours, they don't call too much too late, but I do answer both phones when I'm here. And we had, like, a couple people coming in for permitting and stuff like that, but we can email people the applications too, which we've been doing a lot of. And the only other thing that we have people coming in for a lot is yard sale permits, they have a hard time getting in during the eight to three if they work to get those yard sale permits.
Yeah, and that's kind of why I thought we did one night later, was for the people who do work the first shift hours that they could stop in, so.
And I mean, if somebody calls in and says they really are having a hard time coming in till three, and they can get here at four, we can schedule a time, I'm, I'll work with them.
Jess would be flexible.
Okay, that sounds good.
That's good.
I mean, that you've tracked it and not just say, hey, it's not worth it.
Right, right.
I'll make a motion that we adjust the Wednesday hours to end at three o'clock to match the rest of the week due to lack of use, lack of participation.
There you go, yep. All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's all of us, you did, so the motion carries, okay. When you want to effectively do that, Jess, you think? July?
Yeah, I mean, we can start it, if that's what we're going to do.
Right away, next week, that's fine.
Put that in your paper circular.
The newsletter, yeah. Yeah.
That came out too soon.
Yeah. A lot of people are watching, right?
That is a, that is a nice newsletter, too.
I know, I, yeah.
I think that's helping a little bit, too, with not having as many people, like the yard sale permit, they can get it ahead instead of waiting till the week of their yard sale, because we've reminded them and some of the things like that, so.
While we're on that subject, you know, I just seen, you know, I don't know, notices going out for vehicles or cleaning, you know, taking care of the lawns, the grass, it's working, and I see a lot of difference in that, so we're doing a great job with managing the borough that way.
Yep, once we get the street sweeper back up and running, we'll. Getting after that part, too.
Right. Okay, now, next, we need a, we have Resolution 2024-08, if you saw it, and we need to fill vacancies on the zoning hearing board. So we have three vacancies right now. We have names here that you just received, hopefully some of you know them, I don't know if any of them are here, Tony's here, did you want to say something at all to the, while you're here?
Are you going to announce the names beforehand, or?
Yeah, yeah, I'll do that, but you're on there, and I want to give you a moment if you wanted to, since you were on before, as you can see, Matt Von Sass and Tony Hagerman were, they had served it previously. Yep, and so the new members that are interested, William F. Smith Jr., Stephen Merson, Diane Alwine, and William Smith Jr. Now, how does, which ones, which?
I'm William Smith Jr.
Oh, you're the junior.
I'm, I'm.
Okay, so you're the, that one, okay.
Why didn't we put Borough Bill behind there?
Okay, so.
Um, I know you talk about going forward with this council, and I know you've had some kind of dissent with the past councils, you're saying you want to go forward, and I think Bill Smith would be the.
Which Bill Smith, this Bill Smith?
Yeah. He's served on council before.
Oh, okay, that Bill Smith, yeah.
Because he knows past previous council, and doesn't know a lot of, so I think he would be a great display of what has gone in the past, that some people may think. We can talk about going forward, so.
You say going forward would have him on it.
I think he would, I guess.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Now, how many vacancies again? Three, so it's three, and then these six.
Yeah, so we got to pick three for the.
Right, now, how about the, what I got confused, I had got like a quick thing from Jess, what is the serving time there, how does that work, is it three years?
Three, two, and one, one.
Yeah.
Get Luke involved.
Yeah, so terms are for three years, generally, however, because of lack of making appointments in the past, right now, all three of your seats are vacant. So the way we have it set up is you're technically filling three vacancies, right? So one term will expire at the end of each year, so at the end of this year, 2024, there's going to be one term that expires, so you're filling a, appointing a person to fill that position, and the second term will expire at the end of 2025, so you're picking one person for that, and then the third person for the end of 2026. It's a little confusing.
That we're not having to, you know, all three at the same time.
And then year over year, and January at your first meeting, you're going to make one appointment.
Let's just, okay, so we pick three, there's A, B, and C, and at the end of one year.
A will be up.
A is, okay, so A is out?
At the end of.
Not voted out or anything, just?
Automatically.
For reelection.
Yep. Okay, and then the following year?
B will be up.
No, does A, so A goes out, and somebody else has to be voted into that spot?
For the next, for the following three years.
Now, A can't run for that spot, A's just automatically out, is what you're saying?
They couldn't reappoint, yeah, they can rerun.
But I could also choose a new person.
Yeah, yeah, you can choose any.
And do, are we choosing specifically which person will fill the one year, which person will fill the two, and which one will fill the three?
Who's at the board, or?
That's up to you all.
So, does somebody know Steve Merson and his credentials?
Yes.
Okay, Chief, go ahead.
Steve Merson does home improvement, remodeling, has been in the business for quite a few years. I think he would be a really good.
Choice.
Choice for zoning hearing board.
So we, I mean, if he's, so number three would be the three-year one, right? Okay, so we have to do that, one, two, and three, one year, two year, three year, so we have to kind of weigh this a little bit, right?
So one's doing one year, one's doing two years, one's doing, so.
Right, one, two.
Six months.
Yeah, yeah, it's just the rest of this year until January, yeah, reorganize it, yeah.
But then if they want to rerun, and you want to reappoint them, you can reappoint them for the next three years.
That's right.
Exactly. So we're beginning, we're starting the cycle, three-year cycle, we're reestablishing.
Since it hasn't been done in the past, we have, I started now.
Because we haven't been doing what we were supposed to be doing for the past three years in appointing people, so now we got to point all at once.
I know Bill Smith, William Smith that's right here, used to be a borough manager here, and he has a lot of experience with zoning and how the borough works.
Yeah.
And has been an asset to the borough here in the past several years, just helping out. I think he'd definitely be good.
Right.
Good for that position.
And then Diane Alwine?
Diane Alwine is, was at Conaloga Contractors, did a, did a lot of stuff there, and then was employed until she retired at, our, the engineering chair, Bob Share. So she has, she has a lot of knowledge for.
I'm just looking at these letters of interest, I mean.
Engineering knowledge.
Okay, I guess, you know, it's going to be very difficult here, let me read what I have here, okay? So this is, this is Diane Alwine, she says, I am a resident of McSherrystown Borough, and I'm interested in serving on the zoning hearing board. Please contact me at Joy Conde, so that's what she said. To whom it may concern, this is from Stephen Merson, he has Rick there. I'm interested in working with the zoning hearing board, I believe I would be a good choice for the job since I've lived in McSherrystown for over twenty years and have worked in the community as a home improvement contractor for forty years. I believe everyone has good ideas and willing to work with others and to compromise so that our town can be as good as it can be, so. William H. Smith, that you, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw Ridge Avenue. I'm applying to council for the zoning board position, I have experience for the job, I am presently serving on the Adams County Planning Board. After, sir, oh, yeah, okay, I'm trying to read your person. After serving several terms, and I was just reappointed for another four years. Okay, and then, that's his envelope. So that's, that's, let's see here, oh, here's Matt, he just, Matt Von Sass, now, he's served on it previously. I'm sending you an email, let you know that it's up to day six-ten, I'm interested in maintaining the position as a board. And then here's one more, I think, I have here. This is from, I guess, is it the other Bill Smith? I am willing, I am writing to express a strong interest in serving as McSherrystown Borough Zoning Hearing Board. With a solid background in local governance and a deep understanding of zoning regulations, I'm eager to contribute my skills and expertise in this important role. Having served four years in the borough council, including two years as president, I've gained valuable experience in addressing the needs and concerns of our community. During my tenure, I actively participated in zoning-related discussions and decisions, which provided me with a comprehensive understanding of the intricacies involved in zoning regulations and their impact in the community. Furthermore, my two-year tenure as zoning committee chair has allowed me to delve deeply into zoning issues, fostering a keen awareness of the complexities and nuances inherent in zoning matters. My familiarity with blueprints. My familiarity with blueprints coupled with my educational background in physics has equipped me with the analytical skills and attention to detail necessary for evaluating zoning proposals and their potential effects on our community. I am passionate about ensuring that zoning decisions are made with careful consideration of both technical specifications and community welfare. Confident that my continued experience in local governance, zoning matters, and my educational background uniquely position me to make meaningful contributions to the zoning hearing, but thank you for your consideration. I'm enthusiastic uh, about the opportunity to serve in the zoning hearing board and continue working towards the betterment of the community. Okay, so that's as much information as I can share. You know, this is. So, you know, we basically, you know, somebody, we're, we have to make a motion for three people on here, and then take a vote if, if, you know, that we can come to agreement with all three, you know, right?
Did we talk about Matt? Do we, did we say anything about that?
Yeah, I mean, he's served before, I mean, I I never heard.
I think that's all I heard.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, how long did he serve? Four years, or how long was he on that job?
Not sure. It it probably was more than four years.
I think it was.
Yeah, yeah, he's been, he's around, so, yeah, I mean, he's got a lot of experience. Yeah, yeah, we need an al- alternate too. You wanna do that?
We can, we can.
We're gonna pick three, and then we'll do the rest, we'll do an alternate from the left, yeah, is that good enough? So you you'd like to be the alternate?
Or two alternates?
Yeah, yeah, we can go two alternates, yeah, we can go up to, what, three alternates, you said, so. We we could, you know, do it that way, first alternate, second alternate, third alternate, is that how it would work?
We got six here that fill.
We we can make everybody happy, right?
We just need to elect them in which.
So let's, let's, let's think of it that way, so let's uh, you know, talk over these, uh, who we'd want for the top three. I mean, uh, so Tony's, he he's willing to do the alternate. So, you know, we we could do one like with Matt and Steve and Diane, Matt, Steve, and Bill. I mean, uh, you know, I just need a motion and to see if everybody's in agreement, right? What do you, you're the vice president, Joe, you come up.
Or do you, do you, I don't know, call out the one-year one and whoever gets the most votes for the one-year? So everybody goes around individually, says who they wanna pick for the one-year, and whoever gets the most, whichever person off this list gets the most votes for the one-one-year. They get the one-year, then we go to the two, three, alternate.
So we, but I think the other way around. Yeah, let's do the three-year first, and that way, you know, that that would be the one that we think's the most qualified to serve for the longest period of time, right?
Well, do you want a motion or?
Yeah, let's, let's, let's do it individually, right, like, like. Yep, I I like that, so let's do that for the, for the three-year, who?
I'll make a motion for William H. Smith, that's here, here, that's you, right? Uh, for the three-year.
Yep, okay.
He has the most experience for sure.
Uh, do I have a second for that?
Or are we gonna do a roll call?
And then see who gets.
Yeah, then you say the name that you want for the third, for the person with the three-year.
So, I have a second. He made a motion.
Jess, what'd you say?
So, so just ask everyone who they'd like to fill that.
The three-year.
Okay, you're gonna keep track of the votes?
I can.
I'm gonna go ahead with uh, Will- William H. for my three-year.
Are we doing it just around the table, or you wanna do it by your call?
That's why I said, do you wanna do a roll call, cause that's, that's easier for you?
It's okay, go ahead, who do you, Joe?
I'd like to see Steve Merson for the three-year term.
Rob?
Uh, yeah, I'll go with uh, William D. Smith for the three-year.
I was gonna go with William F. Smith for three-year.
I go with William H. for three-year.
And William H. for three-years from that.
Okay, so William H. will be the three-year.
There you go, yeah, this is, this is working out pretty good. Okay, so uh, do I have a motion for the two-year?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, you're not the second?
Save the motion for the end.
Oh, yeah, that's right, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, let's, okay, let's, let's go, uh, let's go down the list here.
I'd say, or, is it me first?
Okay, yeah, go first, yeah, just keep doing it that way, yeah, go ahead, Steve.
Stephen Merson.
Yeah, okay.
Dito, I'm gonna go for Stephen R. Merson for two-year.
Steve.
And I'm Steve Merson, yeah.
I'm William F.
I'm gonna go with William F.
Steve Merson.
That's the two-year.
Yep, that's two years, so now we're on to the one-year.
Go ahead.
Diane Allwine for the one-year.
I guess I'm gonna put Matt Von Sass in for a one-year.
Is Joe allowed to? Does he have to reclusive himself?
Not, not for this.
This is just, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Diane Allwine.
Matt Von Sass.
Now, if our person didn't get it on one of the other rounds, can we say him again?
I'm still on William F.
William F.
Highbreaker.
Oh!
You wanna go out for a pizza or something?
Diane Allwine.
Wait, that's, that's still a tie.
So we have two too, and then that would make three for Diane.
Okay. Okay, so first.
Good shaking.
Start us off with the.
Now, there's the alternate, in other words, if one of them go, they, he's the, this person's the first one to.
Yeah, an alternate's an alternate, so. Would, if you would, if you would like to, we can make our first alternate the first call in place of.
Whoever.
One of the, one of the members in the zoning hearing board couldn't make that meeting.
And the term for the alternates is different, so all of them will be three-year terms from today. It doesn't have this staggered structure.
So do we, and we have, do we want to order again, or? Yeah.
So are you, are we gonna appoint all three?
Might as well.
Can we, we can use the ones that were already on the sheet for an alternate or not, no, I guess we can?
If we're gonna appoint all three, we can just appoint all three to an alternate.
How often do you need all three? I mean, how?
That would be, that would be.
Pretty, pretty rare.
Rare, it would, that's why, that's why Jess had one, do you wanna just do one? Just do one, that's what was on the agenda, that's fine, yeah.
I'd start off with Matt Von Sass.
I guess I'm gonna go with William F. Matt.
I'll go with Matt.
I'm gonna go off Tony.
Tony, what'd you say?
Tony Hagerman.
Tony Hagerman?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
That didn't go quite the way I expected. That's fine. William F.
Matt Von Sass.
No, it's been Matt Von Sass.
Alrighty.
Still. So Rob, you just need to make a motion to approve the resolution with those things in it now.
I need a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four, appointing Steve Merson. Yeah, William H., that's right, William H. Smith for the three-year term, Stephen Merson for the two-year, Diane Allwine for the one-year. And Matt Von Sass is the alternate. I have a motion.
Make that motion.
All in favor?
Me.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you. And now we just need approval of the expenditures.
Skip one.
What? Just skip one? Oh, oh, solicitor, yeah. I need a motion to appoint Joseph Herb of Barley Snyder. As a zoning hearing board solicitor. Anybody know, was he on before?
He's on for quite some time.
There we go, I I know of him, yeah.
Oh, he was on previously?
There you go.
Make that motion.
Alright.
I'll second it, I'll third it.
All in favor? The last one, thanks Jess for helping out there, uh, approval of expenditures, any questions about the expenditures? So I'll need a motion to approve it then, whenever, somebody.
Make a motion to approve the expenditure.
Second it, all in favor? Anything else that anybody wants to bring up before we close? Thank you all for your attendance and uh, next meeting will be what, uh, we have it scheduled for Wednesday, June twenty-sixth. Thanks for coming out. Right, we'll let you know.
I'll make a motion to.
Oh, yeah, thanks.